Some pigeons inside.
Thank you for joining us here on this Monday, January 24th, regular school board meeting. We appreciate everybody attending and for those of you watching online, we appreciate it. Just to go over a couple of things, if you have the agenda in front of you, our first item on there is our five strategies, our second item covers our face coverings, and our third item covers the link for our YouTube for the live TV. Number four is the call to order. Ms. Steve, will you please determine if we have a quorum present?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do.
Okay, thank you. Please stand for the pledge if you're able to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bellingham, thank you for leading us through the pledge. You're welcome. Next item on here is number five, the approval of the agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bellingham, a second by Ms. Steve's. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes six to zero, thank you. The next item is number six, the school board public comment guidelines. I'll read this briefly before we open it up for public comment. This is an opportunity for residents, business and property owners, parents, students and employees of the Fairville Public School District to address the board. You must sign up in person at the board meeting and address the board from the podium, which is right here in front of us. Members of the public will address their remarks with civility and respect. After being recognized by the chair, each individual will identify themselves and the group they represent, if any. Please state your reason for addressing the board. This is not a time to debate an issue, but for the board to hear your comments. Public comment is not available at work sessions or closed sessions of the school board. The Minnesota Government Data Practices Act prohibits comment about specific student or staff members even without naming them in open session. This includes the public comment portion of our meeting. The board respects and values input, but when it relates to a specific student, staff, or to a specific matter, such input must be heard by the appropriate personnel such as the building principal or superintendent and not during an open meeting of the school board. Anyone interested in making a public comment will be asked to complete an information card before the meeting starts, providing their name, address, and topic of their comment. All comments must conform to School Board Policy 206, which is available for review on the district website at www.fairville.k12.mn.us. Each speaker will have three minutes to make comments on one specific topic. Each topic will have a total of 15 minutes allowed for comments. Mr. Bellingham will be our timekeeper, if you will, of three minutes. We were going to run this similar to the way that we did when we spoke about masking and essentially we have two candidates if, that are still here for the superintendent position and we were going to allow up to five candidates for each, excuse me, we're going to allow up to five speakers for each candidate, but I only have five and I don't believe that we need to do a drawing or anything like that. If we had more than five, we were going to do a random drawing like we did and we thought that'd be the fairest. So, anyway, I'm going to call them in order of the people that signed up. And so with that, Ms. Linda Moore, will you please come up? And if you would, please just state your name and you'll end up signing that, I believe, but if you don't mind just stating your name.
Yes.
Like we've done in the past, we're going to hold everybody to three minutes the best we can. Mr. Bellingham's timer goes off, we'll let you know you've got, you know, your three minutes are up, but I'm not going to be rude and cut anybody off mid-sentence. I'm going to ask that you try to wrap it up as quickly as possible. If you go to four minutes, that's too long, I will cut you off by four minutes. And I don't mean to be rude, but we just, I want to be as consistent as possible with everybody, so thank you. Ms. Moore, the floor is yours, please.
Yes, Linda Moore, I'm a citizen and this is for Mr. Bente. Good evening, board members. I have respect for both candidates vying for the position of superintendent and my stance is based on their platforms, where they stand on issues. I urge you to support Jamie Bente for superintendent. My reasons stem partly from the community survey results. From the survey, there were some major issues, one big one, communication that dovetails into trust issues. Many conservatives in the district do not feel their voices are being heard, but when someone listens, respect is fostered. From the interviews and from my impressions on Thursday, I believe Mr. Bente is the better listener. For instance, Mr. Bente gave the example that a parent approached him about why certain students were released from school at one time and some at another time, at a later time. Mr. Bente listened to this mother, looked into it, and effectively resolved the situation. What's important about this is that Mr. Bente not only listened, but acted in a timely fashion. This is communication and trust building. Superintendent must live in the district. Since Mr. Bente has worked in the district for nine years, I believe he has more of a feel for those in the district than Mr. Anderson. Bottom line is that Mr. Bente already has had, has a vested interest in this community. You know liberalism can be graded on a scale, some are more, some are less. In my opinion, Mr. Anderson has more liberal leanings that could exacerbate the more conservative voices in our district. Therefore, if Mr. Anderson is voted in, I believe this perceived or real gap between those at administration and community members may widen. Mr. Anderson did speak of a fair and balanced and noted that there would be no political signs in the classroom. However, in an election year, wouldn't it be wise to have a debate with signs in a high school political science class? Why? There are a number of adults who don't realize that political parties have platforms, the parties view on major issues. Students in high school need to know these platforms in an unbiased setting to make informed choices. Mr. Anderson did speak of CRT as a theory, and this is a college level course. I agree. It's a theory based on Marxist principles and is definitely inappropriate for less mature minds. Finally, Mr. Anderson is proud of the program perspective in arts class and red wing. For instance, students are shown a picture and then discuss their different biases. What are their implicit biases? Implicit refers to inherent unspoken biases. Hmm, this is a language of CRT. On the other hand, Mr. Bente stated that he doesn't believe in indoctrination. He taught facts but did not push his beliefs onto his students. Yes, there have been certain school announcements on gender, but Mr. Bente was adamant that students not be indoctrinated in the classroom.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Three minutes, are you close to being done?
Yes, two sentences. For these reasons, I believe Mr. Bente has the more conservative ego point than Mr. Anderson. Therefore, I urge you to vote for Jamie Bente. Thank you.
Thank you.
I sign this.
Yes, please, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Moore.
Mr. Nord Johnson, you are next.
Mr. Board President, I'll defer my time. I did get a letter out to the group. Would you like me to read that publicly? I can, or I can defer my time to the other panelists.
It's entirely up to you. We have time set aside, it's entirely up to you, I'll leave it, it's your call. I can tell you that I have received and read your letter. I would assume most board members have seen it, but if you want to read it, if you don't, that's entirely up to you.
I'm getting a couple nods. I care about you. All right, you're going to want me to get out my glasses.
Thank you for your time, Nord Johnson, Fairville resident and president of the Fairville Chamber of Commerce. Dear School Board, first, thank you for your commitment to Fairville. Strong schools are critical to any community and with Fairville Public Schools' partnership and support, we are truly moving in a positive direction for our town and most importantly, our students. Our public schools team has proven that we are indeed meeting the opportunities our unique demographics bring. These efforts positively impact outcomes for all students. Indeed, a key to growing success has been our faculty and staff outreach to students and families from all cultures and backgrounds. The ability to identify with, to identify with youth in poverty and the challenges that go with language and social-cultural barriers are critical in growing relationships with students, families, and communities who are marginalized elsewhere in their lives. Our Fairville Public Schools teams have spent untold hours and emotional capital in building bridges and pathways for these students so families can feel normal, accepted, and valued in our schools. Mr. Jamie Bente has invested years playing a key role, not only to build this capacity within himself, he has also fostered this culture within staff and faculty alike. Abdi Abdallah, he stated that Jamie Bente exemplifies the abilities to engage both students and ethnic communities to improve student success. He cited as Jamie's leadership as an inspiration for others in the workplace to do the same. Importantly, our community has recognized the fruits of these efforts. Mr. Jody Long, plant manager at Jennie O. Turkey Star, stated that the improvements in our schools over the last nine years are noticeable and welcome. He credits the high school with playing a key role in helping build success stories in Fairville students. Lastly, I have had very positive experiences with Mr. Bente and his team while working on the development of technical science pathways in both healthcare and new machine engineering and construction trades pathways. His intuitions around the delivery of these important additions are reflective of his ability to communicate at all levels and his passion for student success. I wish you the best in choosing our next superintendent. I understand the differentiating qualifications between the two candidates, want you to rest assured that the chamber and our membership stand ready to support your choice to lead Fairville schools.
Thank you, we appreciate you. Next is Mr. Keith Kramer. Nord, you got done in time.
Yeah. He had 18 seconds to go.
Well, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Keith Kramer and my wife and I have three students in the public school system, one in elementary, one in middle school, and one in high school, so come to speak to you today as a community member. So I believe Jamie Bente possesses the intangibles that are primary to be successful as our superintendent. Although he has never been superintendent, he holds many qualities such as passion for our district and a fundamental understanding of the strengths and challenges in Fairville education that in my opinion take precedence over not holding this position before. He's a team player. He's humble yet confident. He understands that he is part of a bigger picture and he lacks ego and self-centeredness. He's hungry, he has a strong desire to see students and faculty succeed, and he's smart. He has emotional intelligence to speak to others in a way that lifts them up. He's honest and he speaks the truth in a caring fashion. He doesn't push unnecessarily and he is approachable. He collaborates. We have seen him work with our community on the seven-period day. We have seen him work with South Central College on pathways in health sciences and nursing and now in manufacturing. And he understands the dynamics and inner workings of Fairville, which I think something that really needs to be heard. He understands the good and the bad and he's able to hit the ground running because he does. Plus, he does have humble beginnings and they're very relatable to many in this town. In the end, this is about people promoting a culture of excellence and a team culture where there's not always consensus, but a willingness and openness to listen and make decisions that continue to move Fairville and set the educational bar high here in town. Jamie has shown that he can do this in his current position, which gives me confidence as a community member to think that he can do this as superintendent as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Our next speaker, Ms. Kathy Anderson.
Hi, I'm Kathy Anderson. I, those two have spoken very well and I am also here for Mr. Bente and so is Ms. Moore, more knowledgeable than what I, I come as a, I am a citizen of Fairville, graduated from Fairville High School, my husband graduated from Fairville High School, seven children graduated from Fairville High School, I have 30 grandchildren, 16 are living in the district. We do homeschool for when we're young, but we have, we always use the public school and we've been thrilled to use them over the years. I, I come from what I'm speaking about and on behalf of Mr. Bente, even though I do not know him, my, my daughter, I have a grandson at the high school and she speaks very highly of her dealings with him. But mine is, I am an RN, I'm retired, but I worked in management for many years and it was hospital background. I am very sympathetic and understand about wanting outside voices. I, I know that fresh eyes can often see something that internal candidates cannot see, okay? I understand that and I understand experience. Throughout my years, 40-plus years of being, of working, we hired many administration and middle management individuals. I was always middle management, so I am speaking as what I saw over the years because I never, it wasn't my goal to get to administration, so you can take it for what it's worth. There are two rules, there's two things of thought. One is looking from the outside, the other school of thought is growing from within, okay? My concern over watching Fairville over the last many years is that we have become to be a circular, we get an administrator in, and I've expressed this to several of you board members, we'll get a staff member that's excellent or an administrator that is excellent and then they either apply to move up or they get a better job somewhere else and we lose them. What I've been really most impressed by, I mean, there's many reasons, but the fact that someone would stay in our district for nine years, that is something in this day and age. And it's also in my experience, when someone has enough confidence and enough vulnerability, should we say, to put themselves out there to go vertical instead of lateral, in a, in a position, it says a lot about courage because Mr. Bente, I don't know him, like I say, but he has been in this community for nine years, he knows the stakeholders. I've listened to all the interviews, I respect very much the work that you've all done to try to get to this and I'll be done here, Chad. I just, I would ask you, the old adage, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. I'm not at all saying that I don't respect that we would want someone with more experience, but my hat's off to Mr. Bente that he is willing to stay in our district and tackle these problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, I apologize, I'm going to do my best here, Hannah, Ms. Hannah Vidal, is that correct?
Ms. Hanya.
Hanya, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. If you don't mind, just introduce yourself and then we'll turn it over to you.
Can you guys hear me correctly with mask?
If you want, you can take it off, you're speaking now, that's your phone.
Um, my name is Hanya Vidal. I graduated back in 2019. I have siblings still in the district and I ended up going to Santa La, so I don't, I see them pretty often and I get to hear all the stories and fun things that they do in our school district. And my experience in this school district is I started off being one of the very few people of color in my elementary school classes and as I moved on up to high school, while I saw more diversity, I still found myself the only one to be in normal classes, involved in activities, and things like that. So, I wrote down that I'm neutral because I'm really here like to see you guys from a place of concern and distrust, hoping to provide some perspective on the, on like the decision you guys are going to vote on today. I would like to remind you all of your duty as public servants, as the position you hold was given to you based on the trust and faith of the community and the ability, and your ability, to fulfill the role. The school board is an authority responsible for the provisions and maintenance of the school district. Fairville Public Schools has always been very prideful of its strong community values. Unfortunately, I would strongly argue that this sense of pride is problematically and deeply rooted on a foundation of settler colonial violence that continues to silence and laminate the racial and differences and blatant acts of discrimination towards non-white community members and not to mention the students that go to Fairville Public Schools. And you may be asking, who does this brown girl think she is coming into this meeting with her white, not her white, with her liberal agenda? Well, I proceed this question with the following. Fairville Public Schools, according to Google, provides a high-quality and equitable education that nurtures, inspires, challenges, and empowers all students to engage and grow as learners and citizens. Based on this piece of information, anyone can assume that this is, that as a school board member, each and every one of you wake up every day with the intent to fulfill this role and to fulfill the mission statement. That is what is asked of you. Additionally, the school board is intended to be a nonpartisan organization that should focus on the education of the community. And based on the political climate this country faces, as well as environmental and public issues, it has become evident to anyone with critical thinking skills that Fairville Public Schools is not doing enough.
Hanya, I don't mean to interrupt, but your three minutes are up, do you, are you close to wrapping up?
No.
No, so I'm going to allow you about 20 more seconds, like I've done all speakers?
That's fine.
Okay, so, thank you.
Yep. And I can't help but question the motives of our local leaders, including this board. I would like to elaborate this by stating that this board is no longer nonpartisan or apolitical and has lost sight of what is best for the education of the students. And a high-quality and equitable education does not mean lack of accountability and blatant complacency when it comes to hate crimes in the school bathrooms or hung slain pigs to symbolize the black student population because we still remember that, yes.
So I give you another 20 seconds, our policy is three minutes, and I let you go three minutes and 20 seconds, I'm trying to keep it as fair as possible. Are you, do you have any more to say?
Yeah, plenty.
What's that?
I have plenty.
Okay, so, you know, you're more than welcome to email all your comments to us and we'd be more than happy to read them and include them and direct them to Superintendent Sesker as well. Thank you, I appreciate it.
And I hope you do read my letter.
Yes, please send it. Thank you, appreciate it. Are there any other community comments that are not about the superintendent search or a superintendent candidate? Are there any other comments out there regarding anything else on our agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none, we will move on, and with that, this brings us to item number seven, recognition, awards, and presentations. Seven A is the introduction of Mr. Christopher Nelson, our controller. You wanna come on forward up here, please, and just tell us a little bit about yourself, if you don't mind?
Sure. My name is Chris Nelson. I'm the new controller, as you said. I come to Faribault with four years in school business experience. I was at Eden Prairie for those four years in a staff accountant role. Before that, two more years in manufacturing, general accounting experience, and I'm just really excited to be here. I live in Apple Valley, have four kids, and yeah, not a whole lot exciting to be on that.
Welcome, thank you. With that, board members, I'll entertain a motion to approve the employment agreement with Mr. Chris Nelson.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, a second by Ms. Cavalier. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Welcome and thank you. This brings us to item eight, the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Olson with the motion, Ms. Steves with the second. There is no discussion on the consent agenda, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six-zero, thank you. This brings us to item number nine, retirements. Ms. Deborah Teyon, twenty-three years of service. Is Deborah in the audience? No. Ms. Teyon, we would like to thank you for all of your time here. You've been here in the Faribault Public Schools for twenty-three years, and that's a long time, and so we greatly appreciate all of your service. Any board members, any comments that you'd like to make? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the retirement of Ms. Deborah Teyon.
Mr. Chair, I'll approve the retirement of Deborah Teyon with deep gratitude for her years of service.
We have a motion by Mr. Bellingham. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Cavalier. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero, thank you for that. The next item on our agenda is number ten, finance section, and ten A is the minutes, ten B is the budget, ten B one is the enrollment reports, and ten B two is the financial reports. Mr. Gertis, you wanna come forward, and is there anything you would like to highlight for us, or make yourself available for any board member questions?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chad, and more.
Just a couple things to bring your attention this morning, or this afternoon. On the enrollment report, if you look at that, if you guys recall from last month, we were at eighty-nine. We've now dropped to seventy-nine. Really, the big difference month over month is that we're trying to be actively engaged in trying to account for those students who are part of the PSEO program. As you're well aware, we don't get credit or dollars tied to them, so the way we usually handle it internally, those numbers all drop at the end of the year. So we're trying to account for those a little bit earlier on, so we have a more accurate reflection of our true picture over the life of the school year. If there's any questions on that. The other thing I'd like to just briefly mention, I guess maybe a couple other things, if you open up the investment report, the first attachment under ten B two, you will notice that our cash balances continue to kind of fall off a little bit month over month. There was a small drop last month, and a little bit bigger, obviously a cumulative drop this month. The reason for that is just two weeks ago, we did finally receive final approval from MDE for all of our S R two and S R three dollars. So all those monies have now been approved. We are actively updating budgets in both serves, and Chris has been working pretty much the last week on trying to get, update all those budgets and do expense transfers inside of our system so that we can actively engage in billing MDE for these dollars. Currently, we are sitting on close to two million dollars that we are cash flowing in the Department of Education right now. So we're hoping to have that out the door this week, if not, maybe next week, and so hopefully that the February report looks a lot different. Okay, any questions on that? On the comparative financial reports, you'll see one change there specifically with our self-insurance. I reported last month that our self-insurance fund, we were doing relatively good into the positive. Our December, we had a large, it was a large claims month, and so we are now, at this point in time, from a cash flow perspective, in the negative by about eighty-eight thousand dollars. Again, keep in mind that we don't record revenue equally over the twelve months, so again, this is just a point in time, and that we have pretty sure that this will all come back around by the end of the year, while you're on a good note. So, just wanna point that out. And the last thing that I would bring to your attention was the third attachment down. I've showed this slide in the past, but I wanted to just kind of explain this. If you look at the month-end fund balance report, this is just for the general fund, third attachment under B two, you will notice that we started out the year almost running identical with fund balance reports, and then as we get into October and November and December, that gap widens. This goes back to the reason that we don't record revenue during the year till we receive the cash. And as I mentioned earlier, we're sitting on about two million dollars, so that cash has not been recorded as revenue, which is why you see that widening of a gap there between prior year and current year. Again, it's a cash flow tiny issue based on S R dollars and all the work that goes into trying to get that money into our account. And that's really all the items I'd like to update the board on tonight. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Board members, any thoughts or questions? All right, thank you for this, we greatly appreciate it.
Thanks, Scott.
Well done.
This brings us to item ten B three, gifts and donations, which is resolution twenty-dash-eleven. No, is that right? Yes, I'm sorry.
Twenty-two.
It is. What's that? Twenty-two eleven, I'm sorry. Resolution twenty-two eleven, thank you. I have to blow this up on my screen. All right. I will preface this by saying that the Faribault Booster Club, you may or may not be aware, but made a matching five-thousand-dollar donation, or offered a matching five-thousand-dollar donation to the Nest, which is, has a store here at the high school and middle school. So many of the donations here that I'm gonna read off were to the Booster Club for the Nest, so I wanna make that clear. So we have a full host of them here, and I will start reading. Donations to the Nest at the Faribault High School and Middle School. Donors choose items with a value of seven-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Our Savior's Church, four-hundred-and-eighty-four snack pies. Maurice's, three bags of clothing. Lorenz Meats, one hundred dollars. Anonymous, one hundred dollars through the Give Minnesota page. Faribault Booster Club, twenty-five hundred dollars. Janet Tangren, five hundred dollars. Dr. Howard and Helen Sauer, five hundred dollars, that dollars, excuse me. Jim and Linda Dean, twenty-five dollars. Ken and Barb Doubles, one hundred dollars. Faribault Area Retired Educators, two hundred dollars. John A. Hamer Law Office, one hundred dollars. Brad Kinseth, twenty-five dollars. Barb and Doug Wordish, two hundred dollars. Bob and Nancy Phelitz, one hundred dollars. Faribault Animal Center, one hundred dollars. Dave and Suzie De Mars, five, fifty dollars. P E O Representative Marion Ball, eight-hundred-and-forty dollars. Wanda Frank, twenty dollars. Dennis and Vivian Hochfeld, twenty-five dollars. Rosemary Murabek, twenty-five dollars. P I A Insurance Newsletter Donation, five hundred dollars. Pam Baker, ten dollars. The Faribault Foundation, one hundred dollars. The next item on here is Ella Bettner, founder of No Tummies Left Behind, seven-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and thirteen cents for student-negative lunch accounts. With that said, that is the list of the donations for this past month. I will entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash eleven, which is the list of donations I just mentioned.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, a second by Mr. Bellingham. Any further discussion on this item? Mr. Olson.
I've never seen such a great list of donations in my thirteen years. It just keeps on going. This is great.
Thank you. Other, any other comments? I will just echo Mr. Olson's comments, and we thank all of the community that give, whether it's financially or in-kind, or even their time. We greatly appreciate it, and we couldn't do a lot of it without your support, so... Ms. Steves, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham?
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud?
Aye.
Cassie Steves?
Aye.
Chad Will?
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero.
Thank you. Bless you. The next item on here is ten C, and these items have been reviewed by the Finance Committee and are suggested for board approval. So item ten C one is consider approval of district-wide HVAC upgrades. I will entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cavalier, a second by Mr. Bellingham. Mr. Sesker, would you be willing to tell us a little bit more about this?
Yeah, so we are in process of upgrading our pneumatics, the controls of all the systems. Right now, they're on a Johnson control system, which is really dependent on the products that you buy, so this is more of a universal system. So we're just setting this up for the future so that when we do make changes with our HVAC system, it will correlate to any system that we buy and not just a certain particular system. It is part of our long-term facilities plan, and it's within that long-term facility budget. And Kane is asking for your approval so he can get started on that. We're gonna start small, because it's a very complicated system, and we wanna try it, I think at the district office, is that right, Scott? We're gonna go district office first, and then expand from there as we learn a little bit more about the system going forward, so... And it's, by the way, it's the last year that we can find parts for the previous system, so we need to go new anyways.
Thank you for that, Superintendent Sesker. Any other questions or comments regarding this proposal? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero, thank you. The next item is ten C two, consider approval to increase McKinley's speech and language pathologist full-time equivalent, FTE. Do we have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Olson and a second by Ms. Steves. Superintendent Sesker, do you wanna add anything to this?
Pretty self-explanatory, but it is a need that we have. As we increase our enrollment in early childhood, we're seeing more need for speech therapy, so it's a logical increase.
Board members, any other questions or items of discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero, thank you. This brings us to item ten C three, S R budget reduction process for fiscal year twenty-three and fiscal year twenty-four. Mr. Gertis, are you leading us through this, or Mr. Sesker?
Oh, I think maybe Ty will set up the stage, and then I'll take it from there.
Yeah, so this is more just making sure we keep an eye on the S R funding. This year, we're spending about five million dollars of S R dollars. We have about six million dollars left. So as we go through this process, we need to make some adjustments in order to make sure that we don't overspend the S R dollars, and we knew this was coming for the second year anyways. And we do have some one-time expenditures that will obviously go away, but we're also probably going to have to start taking a look at reducing some of that staff, which again, we talked about prior to this too, that we're eventually gonna have to start taking some of the staff away after investing in it. It's very similar to a grant. If you get a grant, and that grant goes away, then you also have to take those expenses if you wanna balance it. So it was great to have it to get us rolling on our programs for catching kids back up, but now we have to make some adjustments now to reduce it back so that we don't overspend. And so maybe, Scott, you can go through some of this to talk about the revenue piece, and then also the expenditure piece, and kind of what we're looking at as we start planning for this S R, I'm gonna call it the S R adjustment.
So, thank you, Mr. Sesker. So I'll just go over this really at a high level, and feel free to ask questions as we go, because there's a lot of numbers and a lot of data in this spreadsheet. Starting at the top of the sheet, you will notice that there is...
Mr. Gertis, can I, I'm sorry, can I interrupt? Is there any way for us to pull this document up on the screen so people in this room and online can follow along, or can we not do that tonight? What are, I'm not sure, sorry to throw a curveball in there, but it's just, when we're dealing with a spreadsheet like this, it's really helpful, if people can follow along, I think.
Can I mirror?
It is on board book, Mr. Chair.
It is on board books, no, I know, but if possible, it's just makes it nicer. Drew, thank you. I apologize for throwing this out to you.
Yes, yep.
Can Scott mirror it up there?
I don't think that came from this laptop.
I don't have access to this room. Rob, can you mirror it up there?
I think Drew can just...
Oh, is Drew gonna pull it, okay.
... and throw it up on the screen.
Okay, thank you. Ten C three, Drew, thank you. Wonderful, thank you. I don't know if everybody can still see it or not, but...
I'll switch over.
All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Gertis, go ahead, thank you. Appreciate it, sorry for the interruption.
No, no, no problem, no problem. So if you start at the top of the sheet, you will see six lines there that have different amounts of money, or our revenue. So when we talk about S R funds, S R funds come in a couple different dozen, what we call finance codes. So the five here are the ones that are really attributable to the project that we're talking about today. So our S R two, which is our fin, our finance code one fifty-five, for three-point-two million. Our S R three, which are finance codes one sixty, one sixty-one, one fifty, and one seventy-one in this example, really make up the S R three buckets of money that we're talking about today. And then we have some extra money that actually comes back into this budget from our summer steam targeted services program that we're estimating at about a quarter million dollars. The lump sum of all those things you can see in the yellow there is just over eleven-point-one million dollars. So that's the amount that we're working with over the next three years. If you slide down into the second section, what you will... what you will see is how we've either actually spent or budget to spend this year and subsequent years, all the different items that are contained in the Falcon Forward Plan, the ESSER money. And you'll see all those down the side with some money that was actually spent a little bit last year in fiscal year '21, a large column in fiscal year '22, our current year, and fiscal year '23 and '24 to the right of that. If you move down towards the bottom of that first page, you will see that's where we have the dean at the middle school, the OP1 for the Falcons Online, the dean of students at Jefferson, and then some expenses that are both tied to our Falcons Online program through Ingenuity, which is the provider that we're using to help with those courses, as well as healthcare professional dollars that we maybe propose to, at least at this point in time, carry on into fiscal year '23 and '24. Currently, those professionals are covered under a different Finance Code 170 this year, and so they are not built into the budget for fiscal year '22. If we roll down to the bottom, excuse me, the top of the second page, what you'll see there is summary numbers. And this is what Todd had mentioned earlier. We have the total revenue, less what we spent in '21, and it's just kind of a running total. So currently, in fiscal year '22, we're projected to spend just south of $5.7 million. In fiscal year '23, roughly $3.3 million. Fiscal year '24, just south of $3.1 million. So that's the way the budget lays out today. What we're proposing to try and kind of get trued back up is obviously, we have to move from fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23. So we have to have, reduce our $5.7 million plan down to a $3.3 million plan. As well as, as you can see there in the last column, we have overspent our $11.1 million by over a million dollars as it's laid out today. So we have to also account for that delta that we're missing in the plan. So following down the next section, our cuts that we either can make this year, so you'll see there's all over $100,000 in fiscal year '22, as well as one-time cuts in fiscal years '23 and '24. The total of all of those one-time cuts, no staff, non-staff cuts, is over here, just over $1.5 million. So if you subtract the $1.5 million off of the $3.4 million, you're left with about $1.944 million in staffing cuts that need to be made either in fiscal year '23 or fiscal year '24. Again, if we delay the cuts until fiscal year '24, there's going to be an inflationary rider that would come over the top of that. But those are items that need to be trued up before these ESSER dollars run out. So the last section at the bottom is just kind of where we're currently at. This is kind of a working process, but what you're seeing is where we're at in that working process. Staffing cuts times 17, which is a cut for next year. Really, the HVAC staff listed is unrestricted to restricted bucket of money. So that's just really a budget shift, is what it amounts to, but it is a savings into the ESSER funds. And then in fiscal year '23 and, excuse me, '24, there is some proposed positions that are not budgeted for as well. That gives us another $228,000. So where we're at today is we're somewhere in that neighborhood of $400,000, $500,000 short to balance our ESSER budget for your fiscal year '23 and/or fiscal year '24. So that was a very quick overview of a lot of data. So if there's any questions, I would entertain those at this point in time.
Mr. Olson.
So with these ESSER funds, this money was not spread evenly over, what, three years? Or is it five years? Three years?
Three years.
Three years. So what we reduce is, are you saying, like, we're making progress with the children? Of, you know, up, getting them caught up, or what? I mean, why are we cutting? Where are we cutting precisely?
So I can start with that. And then in terms of some of that data, I might need some help from some of my colleagues. So a lot of these cuts, Mr. Olson, in the second section are items that the Board approved as part of the Falcons Forward Program that were one-time purchases. So if we look at this list, and you will see all of these dollars, the $700,000 that's listed at item number one, that was a Board motion at the end of last year to move those expenses into ESSER and not cut them in fiscal year '21. So that's what that $700,000 is. As you move on down the line, some of those other expenses were also items that were pushed into fiscal year '22. Moving down the line, there was five elementary teachers that were brought back last year in that line. Summer steam, we put some money set aside for our huge summer steam success that the community app program did in this last summer. And then so on, and so down the line. So we have all these extra positions that we didn't really cut in fiscal year '21 that now we need to deal with in fiscal year '22. So principles have all been meeting. They don't have a finalized plan as of yet to really lay out what some of those expenses look like in each of their five buildings, or six buildings. And that's kind of where we're at today, if that helps. Maybe Mr. Sesker can address the, you know, where we're at with the educational side of this. That's not exactly something that I'm very good at talking about.
Yeah, and I'd probably leave that to Ms. Corcoran to talk a little bit about what we've done with the learning model. But there's a couple of things that we really pushed forward. Mental health was a huge piece of it. So we hired a ton of counselors and social workers. And we have seen, and a coordinator on top of that. We have seen some very positive pieces happening with that component. We reduced class sizes. I think that that one still is kind of up in the air. We're analyzing whether or not that was of big value, or whether or not we could have gone a little bit larger with some of those class sizes. And that's part of the adjustments too that we're talking about. I think the other, the big piece is, did the kids learn? That's the big question that we want to talk about. And Tracy, I don't know if you're prepared or not. You're kind of putting you're on the spot right now. But generally speaking, we have, we haven't seen all the data yet. We took a test called the FAST test in the fall. We are seeing some positive results of the FAST test this winter. So we do believe that the efforts that we put forth investing this large amount of money, which is the big chunk in the first year, is going to start paying off some dividends. So I don't know, Tracy, if you have anything to add. I don't want, again, put you on the spot now. I know you're going to present this probably in February sometime.
There you go. You just summarized some of the data.
Yeah, I think, let's wait till February so we get the data, instead of having me just to try to summarize. But we do believe that there has been a positive result, as a result of the big investment in this first year.
Mr. Chair. So what you're saying, we are getting caught up on academics and the mental health.
Yeah, those are two priorities.
Because that was the purpose of it, right?
It was. Yeah, those two big ones are the big pieces that we believe that we're seeing some very good results. We still have a ways to go, particularly with the mental health. We don't think it's going to be resolved after the first year. That's why a lot of these things are not being proposed within that piece of the reductions. But we are seeing some positive results academically.
So after three years, we're basically back to pre-COVID, right? Theoretically speaking.
Yeah, it's been two years, two long years. Yep.
The other piece that we invested in heavily is Falcons Online Academy. So there's obviously a lot of staff and resources that we were able to tap the ESSER money for to build out that program and watch that grow over the next couple of years as well, which is maybe a driving factor why we're up 79 students on the enrollment report versus neutral or down.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Sesker, Mr. Gertis. My question is about Falcons Online. So when ESSER funds run out in two years, how do we continue to fund Falcons Online?
Well, there's a lot of different ways you can do that. Number one, ideally, it'd be nice to fund it independently with enough of the enrollment.
Yes.
If you use $8,000 as kind of a general guideline for the number of dollars we get per student. And we don't always want to count current high school students or current middle school students or current elementary school students, because that's a zero savings. If there's a draw from open enrollment, which we're seeing, we are getting kids open enrolled into this program or homeschool kids. And we've seen some parents that are happy with our program. I attribute that a lot to Ms. Botham. She's done a great job with this program. And our expenditures are teachers and the coordinator. And we have five teachers, one coordinator. And if you can do the math with that, figure out the number of kids you need to make that a break even, that's ideally we want to do. Of course, you have other things too. If you think it's worth the investment, then you can take it from the general fund. And then I know that you have an operating levy probably coming up, maybe in the year or two. If that's something that's important for this district and for the community, and that's something that you need extra revenue for, that might be something to consider too. So there's different things that you can do. I just, in education finance, particularly the revenue, is incredibly complicated. So you just have to, you can't necessarily think of a single revenue source in order to support a single program, because there's going to be multiple sources.
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry, that's a long explanation.
No, no.
Other questions, board members? Mr. Gertis and Mr. Sesker, I do have one. And I apologize, this is kind of in the weeds here, if you will. But on the first page, it's the line item of high school fax, elementary, FIEN, middle school business, middle school ads. And in fiscal year 2022, it looks like we have budgeted $281,686. And then it looks like for fiscal year '23, it's $408,918. That's one of the very few lines that it went up or is projected to go up? What, can you tell me any more about that?
I certainly can. So Chad, if you look at that line as well as the line above it, those two lines are kind of blended together. The reason we have one going up, and you'll see the one right above it with a steep drop going down, is that we've mixed funding sources there between 155 and 161. And so this was just a way to try and have the accounting staff keep track of who's moving to what bucket and when we're shifting that. Because as you are aware, some of those Finance Code dollars that I mentioned earlier have specific allowable uses for that. And that's part of the reason this has taken so long is we've had to rework through a lot of those different budgets to make sure that we have the allowable expenditures in FIN 161 versus some of the other ones. So that's really just our way of trying to keep track of that.
And if I could just interject too, I just want to put a huge shout out to Amory Leland. She really did a nice job of helping us detail those line items and going back and forth with Minnesota Department of Education, which can be sometimes a nightmare. But she really got those things through to get the approval for each of those different finance pieces that we applied for. So a big kudos to her.
Sounds like braided funding.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, yeah, yeah. She did, that is finance, yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments, board members, regarding this ESSER budget reduction process? This is just a report?
Yeah, I just need to add one more thing. We're going to balance the ESSER piece, and we think that we can do that fairly quickly. I think the other piece is, this is separate from the budget. This is just ESSER. We haven't addressed the budget yet. And if you've seen the enrollment, you have 300 seniors, and you have around 200 kindergartners coming in. So that means we're going to have to make a separate adjustment for that. That's coming a little bit later, and we'll get you more details for that piece too, okay? So there's going to be another adjustment we're going to have to make.
Superintendent Sesker, just in terms of a rough timeline on these ESSER reductions and then the other general reductions, can you give us any guidance of what we're looking at there?
Yeah, we tried to jump ahead of this a little bit. We actually started this before Christmas. Normally, we'd wait till after in January. So we're a little bit ahead of schedule, although it's more complicated because of the ESSER. We're hoping, I'm kind of looking at Scott. We do have to do, before we can start doing all of this, we'd like to bring it all together so that you have everything in one big package. We need to know our enrollment projections for next year. We just don't know that yet. And Scott, you want to give us a timeline? That's the next piece.
Right. So I have enrollment projections almost complete, subject to review by another set of eyes, or maybe multiple sets of eyes, to review that. We will have a tentative revised '22 budget for you, at least in summary form, for your work session on February 7. And hopefully, the full revised budget for the Board meeting in February. Also, for your work session on February 7, we're hoping to have at least a first pass at what those reductions are that Todd just mentioned for then fiscal year '23 that are above and beyond what we just talked about here with these ESSER buckets. So hoping to have a lot of data for you here in a couple of weeks when we all see each other again.
So the majority of those reductions will hopefully be done. If you want to put the timetable on that for staff would be into March, beginning probably the third week of March. I know, I'm looking at Nicole, she's, third week of March at the very latest, we'll have that. So we should be pretty well complete by the third week of March, all right? And then we'll do the details, get the regular budget out, and that'll be done in June.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Mr. Olson.
Yeah, Courtney was mentioning on the Fairbowl's Online that we have students coming in. Okay, is that separate from the general budget? Because the way it sounds, that we're graduating more than what kids are coming in with, you know. How can you tell people to have babies?
Right. I'm not going to do that.
No. But is that what Courtney was mentioning, was that separate? That money is just for the Fairbowl's Online, or do we mix it?
We mix it. It goes all into one big kitty. Yep. But we do, we haven't yet, but I think it's, I'm not speaking for you, Scott. I'll sort of speak for you.
Okay.
Eventually, that would be the plan, is that we keep it, it all gets dumped in the same amount. It's just a matter of how the accounting folks put that on paper. So we've got all these different accounts. I can see an expenditure account separate with the online and a revenue account separate with online so that we can analyze them more closely. We're just not quite there yet.
Because that's where we're gaining students, is online. And then because of lack of babies, I'll call it that, it just, that's a separate.
That's a separate item.
That's a separate, and we shouldn't take away from online because then it could drop.
Yeah, yeah.
So it should be, to me, a separate, not to be touched.
Yeah, we're just not quite there yet, so we'll get to that.
So just to add a little bit to that, we do have separate ORB codes that are set up with the Department of Education for both the elementary, middle school, and high school, for Falcons Online. So those are all set up in our accounting software, and we are actually keeping track of expenses by those three ORB codes. So we're trying to keep track of all the staff expenses, the coordinator expenses, the OP1 expense, all the Ingenuity expense, all the expenses, that being said, by site. Breaking out the revenue, as time intervenes, will be a little bit more difficult because it's really hard to determine who's new to Fairbowl. And then also looking at, did we keep people in Fairbowl by giving them an online option, or maybe they would have gone elsewhere? So there's potential gain based on lost, you know, lack of lost revenue. So, you know, some of those things are things that we need to look at is really what is, what is the value of the revenue to that program? So, but I think we have a pretty good track on starting to collect data correctly so we can keep track of that over time in the accounting world, I hope.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Appreciate your report on that. Both the information that you and Mr. Sesker provided, thank you. This brings us to item number 11, the Policy Committee. Policy 11A are the minutes from the January 4, 2022 meeting. Policy Board members that serve on that committee, is there anything you would like to recap or specifically point out?
I'll let you go, John Bellingham.
Thank you.
Board members and members of the public, so if you look at the minutes here, pretty well summarize...
well summarizes, it does summarize exactly what we talked about in addressing each policy that's, and I'll jump, Mr. Chair, I'll jump into B as well then, presented for the first reading and the rationale and why, et cetera, for that. So again, this committee can, is very proactive and is really, we dig deep and research our policies.
Wonderful. Thank you. Board members, any follow-up questions anybody would like to ask? All right, hearing none. This brings us to item 11B, where the following policies are presented for the first reading. That is Policy 413, harassment and violence. Policy 507, corporal punishment. Policy 515, protection and privacy of pupil records. 12 dot 2, education of homeless children. Are there any questions regarding those four policies that are here tonight for our first reading? Mr. Bellingham or Ms. Cavalier or Ms. Steves, I believe, all three of you are on the policy committee? Ms. Cavalier's up, Ms. Steves and Mr. Bellingham.
I'll let Ms. Steves go if she has something to.
All right, I just want to ask, would all four of these pretty much align with an MSBA policy? Is that what that is, or is there anything different that would?
I don't think there were any, I mean, it's just bringing them to current day and age. If you look at the age of, I think it was corporal punishment from the 70s. So again, to thank Kathy for proactively moving our group forward and making sure that we are up to date.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, as Kathy said, the, these four are to, one, recommendations from MSBA and newer policy, and two, to keep current with statute. Very important there, so.
Okay, thank you, yes.
So just to clarify, Policy 413, 507, 515, 612, are, we are rescinding these policies or we are reviewing them to update them?
This is notice of first reading. So this is a first reading.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, but what will we be doing next time with these policies? If, after today being the first reading?
Then at the board meeting in February, the end of February, we would be approving the revision of these policies.
Great, that's what I wanted to hear.
That's the second reading and approval.
Uh huh, so it's not that we're pulling, because our next vote is on rescinding old policies, we are not, we will still have policies against corporal punishment, for example. I just want to make sure we're clear to everybody here.
Yep.
Okay? Thank you for letting me stumble through those questions.
Any other questions, comments? All right, that brings us to item 11C, consider approval for rescission of the following policies. Policy 450 dot 1, Policy 450 dot 2, Policy 455 dot 1. This is our second reading of these. Is that correct?
It's just a rescission.
Just a rescission, it is not our second reading, just a rescission, okay? Do I have a motion to, and we'll take all three of them like we always do, we'll take all three of them together. Do we have, unless somebody wants to really specifically speak to one? Do we have a motion to approve the rescission of the following policies?
Summued.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Olson and a second by Ms. Cavalier. Any further discussion? I will just point out, you know, you have a lot of policies when you get into the dot 1s and the dot 2s, so, so thank you.
Yes.
For the policy committee. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0, thank you for that. Brings us to item number 11, other matters. You know, 11A is our superintendent mid-year goals update. So Superintendent Sesker, would you like to walk us through this? And thank you for putting this out here for us.
Yeah, it kind of gives you a sample of some of the things that we're doing as a team. And the, the goals that are on there, I just also printed out, let me just make sure I got them here. The first one.
Superintendent Sesker, sorry. Since we have this attachment, is there any way that we can have somebody, once again, pull these on the screen at all and for viewing audience to follow along, or is that, sorry? Thank you, Drew. Drew, we're down to item 12A.
And then while Drew is scrolling it down there, just to emphasize, these are the three goals that you guys set for me ahead of time. I'm not going to go through and read those. But I did put some comments in there. We, I also gathered comments from our administrative team, both our cabinet and our principals. And then I also decided to put a couple of examples for each of those pieces, too. I got a few others, but I just chose a few of them. You can imagine that this can go pretty in-depth into many, many areas. So, for example, in the middle school, when we talk about develops and articulates a clear vision for differentiated elementary school programming through the FPS, we also do some individualized work at the other buildings, too. So you can read, I don't know if you want me to read the whole thing or not. You guys have read everything that's in there. I just want to point out that you've got examples that are on there, and it's online for the audience if you want to see those, too. I also attached what we're doing at the preschool, too, because I think that's important, that can sometimes be forgotten. So Olivia was kind enough to put down some examples of each of those three different goals, too. So I guess I, I guess I'll just take questions, that might be the easiest, because there is a lot of data in here. And we are making progress on all three of those different calls that we have, that we have written in our strategic plan.
Mr. Olson?
Yeah, Todd, kind of, what's your opinion of the mental health of our students right now? I know that's a general question.
No, it's a good question.
But if it varies from elementary to middle to high school, just, just how is the mental health?
I still think that we have some work to do. And I think that having Janet in there and her strategic plan is starting to address some of those pieces. I know that adding those social workers at the elementary school has helped and given us a better ratio for helping some of those kids in the classroom. I know that the guidance counselor has, at the middle school, has freed up Amanda's time at the middle school, so she has more time to address some of those issues that we are seeing with our kids. We knew that there was going to be social, emotional, and mental health issues that we're going to have to address with our kids. I don't know if we predicted it was, it was going to be this much, but there, there are pieces out there that we are addressing, but I'm going to tell you right now that we still have work to do. It's going to be some, we're going to reevaluate, and Rob and his team have done a great job so far, and we're going to continue to reevaluate and do the best we can with what we have. We also have a group that meets once a month that involves our community, so we do have community assets that have also helped. Janet is also running that meeting, too, and I know Kathy's on that. I think, Richard, you're on that, and Chad, you're on that, too. We just keep plugging away. We've got some great people on there, and I think that they're doing some wonderful things with the kids. It's just a really difficult piece to say that we've resolved everything. I don't know if we ever will. It's just been a really tough start, I'll tell you that.
Are we addressing the mental health of our staff?
We are, we are working on that, too. Another great question. I'm kind of looking at Nicole and Rob. I can probably give you a better report in February, maybe that would be a better way of doing that, to give you an analysis of where we are with our mental health. We do have, we're doing the best we can with our staff as well, I can tell you that much. And we don't have a baseline data versus a final data to really give you any sort of objective information to tell you that we've done this. I can just tell you what we have been doing in order to help improve the morale and the mental health of our staff. I do see improvements. I see a lot of improvements in the elementary school, especially compared to the beginning. One example is I'll walk through the elementary schools, and kids are finally understanding the process or the, the, understanding the routines of being an elementary student again. They forgot, a lot of the, the kids forgot how that, that all works. And our teachers have just been outstanding at, at staying focused and, and keeping the, that whole thing in sight so that those kids are getting to the, to the point where they're, they're addressing those trauma and those social, emotional things that are in the classroom. So look, wait till February, and I'll give you a better report. Maybe I can pull some stats out, too, that I can point out. And then Janet and Rob and Tracy can help me out with some of that information on February. I'll give you a better report in February, okay? But we are making progress, I can tell you that.
Superintendent Sesker, do you, do you have any knowledge of, you know, the other schools in the Big Nine or surrounding communities with how they sit today compared to us with the number of social workers, you know, compared to a student level, or, you know, any of that analysis? I guess what I'm getting at, I, I think it's really important that our community knows that a significant chunk of these ESER dollars are helping fund mental health specialists. And that need, as it's one of our strategic items. And from my digging around, I'm certainly not the expert on it, but from my digging around and speaking with representatives at both Alina and Mayo Clinic, neither of them are aware of school districts our size that actually have a mental health coordinator. Now, that could be different now that these ESER funds are available, but I think that speaks to our, our directive and our action items to help students with their mental health, so.
Yeah, and I think on top of that, the person that we hired is just a really great person. I think Janet's doing a wonderful job with that program. Other schools are doing different things. So it's not that the other schools are not addressing it, they're just addressing it different ways. Some schools are a little further ahead of us than in the trauma-informed teaching areas of all, all classrooms. We're starting to get a lot of that information out to our teachers. So I would say that our situation is pretty unique. We want to be the best site in Minnesota for some of these things. But you just have to know, too, that the other schools are dealing with this, they're probably dealing with it in a different methodology, but I think the way we're dealing with it is appropriate for Fairbowl Public Schools.
Mr. Chair, if I may, so I really appreciate the report on, on the mid-year progress, and then the, the information you gave us. The second item here that we can click on is the update on the comprehensive mental health. And then third is the, I really like how we're transforming that. You give a concrete example on the, on the Jefferson report on how, like, an individual building is accomplishing those goals and things like that. So it gives concrete examples on mental health and student performance, equity, et cetera there. So it gives a really, real broad outline for us and the public just to see how we're, you know, where we're going, how we're doing it, and what are we going to do once we're there, so.
Yeah, thanks. And, you know, I, most of the time, I just collect the data. I mean, Jessica and Sean and Janet and Tracy and others are collecting that data and giving it to me, and I'm just trying to put it together so you guys can see that, that we're making some good progress.
Right.
But they're, they're the ones that deserve the most credit.
Other board members? Superintendent Sesker, is there any one item that you're really excited about in these, or any one item that you feel we need more, you know, resources, a little, a little giddy up, if you will?
Go ahead. I, I think, I can kind of give you three pieces that I'm really excited about. I think that one piece is the reading time that we're offering for kids. I mean, Tom Cashper would have been really excited about this, part of it, and I hope Tom's listening to this. But the win time, that we're trying to get the, the buy-in from our staff is going very well. So that piece, that individual piece, really excites me. The mental health strategic plan that we've come up with, that Janet's worked on so hard, I think is great, and that connection we have with the community is terrific. And then the equity piece, having Katie help out with that, Katie Schultz. And our next step for that piece, too, and of course, working with Tracy and KDR and everybody else that's in the room, coming up with a strategic plan that's similar to what the mental health plan looks like. And we're getting there. And it takes some good leadership, and I think that we've got some people in the right spot, doing some very good things for our district with those categories.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any, any other questions for Superintendent Sesker on this mid-year goals update? All right, we appreciate you pulling all this information together.
Yeah.
Next item is 12B, compulsory, compulsory data report 2021-2022.
Yeah, and so this is, just so you know, it's a, we have to do this every year. As a superintendent, I'm in charge of all the kids in the district, and we have to know where they're going. And whether they're going to private school, if they're going to public school, or, or if they're homeschooled or whatever. Kathy takes care of the homeschool folks, and then if they're out of compliance, then we have to send a letter to MDE. And, and that's just what we do. So this is a routine report, we do it every single year.
Board members, any questions for Superintendent Sesker on this? Okay, hearing none, thank you for that report. The next item is 12C, consider approval of the 2022-2023 school calendar. I will entertain a motion to approve, approve the calendar as presented.
Summued.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Steves. Further discussion on this, Superintendent?
Is this much simpler to understand?
Tracy, you better get up here. Tracy's the lead of the calendar committee, so Kathy and I are going to need some help on this one.
Yeah, so the calendar committee met a couple times in the last few months, and we did two things. So number one, we just kind of did an audit of how has the calendar usually run in the past? And so what you see right now is very similar to what has been years past as far as what our calendar includes. The only addition would be an additional day in April is where it lands this year, and that is honoring Eid, which is a holiday that many of our Somali families participate in. And so it was feedback from our staff that said we have 30% of our students who often miss that day of school. And so it made sense, seeing as it fell on a Friday. And we always kind of have a window that we're looking at rather than a specific date, like the Christmas holiday or Good Friday, which are Christian holidays that we do plan our calendar around. We did do our best to fall within that window. And so that's the only change in the calendar. One of the things that Kathy and I have discussed was making a family-facing calendar and a staff-facing calendar, because that's where it can get confusing for parents to know, do I send my kid to school or do I not send my kid to school? But other than that, I'm really grateful for the calendar committee, that's representation of teachers, our assessment coordinator, Katie Ratwell. Nicole helped me out in that, just to make sure that we were honoring the contract language, but also looking at it from a teaching standpoint, making sure we have balanced quarters for our middle school quarter classes, making sure the semesters are balanced. And then looking at, also, this year, we got staff feedback around, did they like, do they like having spring breaks? Are we looking at more breaks throughout the year? Really wanting to respond to what kind of refills our teacher bucket and our staff bucket to make sure that they are getting the rest and taking, have the time to take care of themselves as well. And so that's where this calendar was created from.
Mr. Chair, did you add more words on the sides to explain?
It is as many words as there was before, and that's, again, one of those reasons for a staff calendar and a family calendar, to make it a little more user-friendly for all involved.
Mr. Chair, thank you. The calendar committee should be commended for recognizing that Somali holiday, that's wonderful. I think that speaks volumes. I don't know how many districts are doing that, and thank you for recognizing it. One other comment, the last week in March is a pretty late spring break.
So, yeah, so that's actually in alignment with Owatana and Northfield, to be able to be consistent for SESSAC, but also to honor families who may have kids in various districts.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments around this calendar, board members? Okay. Okay.
This, sorry, I have just one more comment. Some time ago, we talked about maybe developing a two-year calendar. Was that considered in the calendar committee and?
It was. In the feedback that we got from staff, we did ask some questions about other ways to think about the school calendar. And so right now, we have a couple drafts going, one of which proposes more of a college-type model, meaning we would start at the middle of August with the goal of getting first semester done prior to winter break, to then have staff be able to start after winter break with a brand-new semester. But that's something that we didn't feel we were prepared to bring to the board for approval yet. We wanted to get community feedback as well as staff feedback. And so Superintendent Sesker and I believe that it was best to just start with one-year calendar and then to bring that further after we get to our stakeholder feedback.
I'm glad it's in discussion stages at least.
Yes, it is. Yep.
Mr. Chair, have you had a lot of calls with pressure from parents to, you know, give me a calendar so I can plan my vacation?
No.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, I guess I should, I should give that to Kathy, she'd take the calls.
Okay. Because they want to plan if they're going to whatever, you know.
In this calendar, it appears we're starting in late August again before Labor Day, correct?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions, comments regarding this? This is an action item, and we do have a motion by Mr. Olson and a second by Ms. Steves. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero, thank you. Thanks, Ms. Courtney. The next item on here is item 12D. And it's really discussion around the superintendent process. And, you know, it was, it was put on here in case we had anything left over. And we certainly have things left over, so we actually have a continuance of a meeting that will take place after this. So I, I really don't know that there's much to be said at this time. I think it was more as a reflection and, and just to have open dialogue on how people think it went. So I'll leave it at that unless anybody else has anything to say. But anything regarding candidates or, or anything like that, I would ask you to hold your comments for our next meeting where that is the one topic. Fair enough? Okay, thank you. So this brings us to item 13, other items of information. 13A, school board members, the floor is yours. Anything you'd like to share or discuss and anything like that? I, I know we had several people go to the MSBA conference, if there's any feedback. And I know several of you were honored. And why don't we have the recognition tonight? I'm not sure why we should.
I think we should get a picture with all the board and recognize it. We got it, it was just me, Cassie, and Courtney.
Yes.
I think it, don't you think?
I would think that would be nice.
Yeah, if we can get a picture of everybody, because it is recognition of the entire Faribault School Board as being an all-state school board, so I, I think that.
Can we do that once we adjourn this meeting? Is that, is that okay?
Matt, can we do that?
Do that at the end?
That'd be great, yeah.
Okay. But we had some other individual board members recognized, and why are they not on?
We've already done, we've already done that, and.
Some of these board members did not wish to be recognized, just part of being on the board.
We tried.
I guess I could only speak for myself with that.
For those board members that did receive recognition, it's due to their hard work, the amount of time and effort they put in, and they really do a great job. With that said, there's plenty of people in this room and plenty of people in the, watching that may not agree with everything, but I can tell you, they do work really, really hard to come prepared every meeting, every month, and, and do their homework and ask the best questions they can. So with that, to all of you that did receive recognition and certificates, we greatly thank you for that and, and for helping make our board better and our school district better, so thank you.
Maybe, Mr. Chair, just, just to accentuate what Mr. Sesker said, so it, I guess as a teacher, and sometimes it's hard to toot your own horn and recognize, but I'm particularly proud because when I was elected on the board and went to my first MSBA conference, we sat there and we watched probably four or five school districts with their boards go up to the front to be recognized as an all-star school board. And I remember a few of us sitting at that table said, "That's our goal." "That's our goal to be recognized." And now in, after three years, we were. And we were one of four districts' school boards that were recognized in the state of Minnesota this year as an all-star school board based on the fact that the majority of us have had, have taken enough MSBA training, workshops, involvement, et cetera, to, to earn those recognitions of, of your Phase 1 and Phase 2, Phase 3 and Phase 4 trainings within MSBA, et cetera. So again, the people sitting up there, we do put in the time, we do put in the effort. And I, I think it's, it should recognize Faribault in a, and the entire Faribault District in a positive manner. So, thank you, I just needed to say that.
Mr. Bellamy. Any, any, any feedback anybody wants to share on their MSBA conference experience?
Well, I spent a lot of time in workshops that were designed around school boards working with communities where there's disagreement about issues. And I did gather some nice resources that I'll make sure I bring back and share with everybody else. But I found that really, you know, all of our communities in Minnesota have people who feel differently about different issues, and we're all working through it together. And it was great to see so many school board members in those rooms talking about these issues and looking for ways to continue to move forward in a healthy and positive way. So I'll make sure I get those things together and share with everybody, so we can all benefit from me being able to do that. And I continue to be grateful for the opportunity to learn and grow, so thank you.
Same thing.
Same thing. Other board members, any comments about anything else that they would like to address or talk about?
I understand it's Para-Professional Appreciation Week?
Yep.
So, big thank you, of course, to all of our para-professionals in the district. We know the work that you do is incredibly important. Incredibly, unbelievably impressed that you continue to go outside with our children on cold recess days and all of the work you do to educate our teachers. Para-professionals are certainly teachers in our schools, and we appreciate all that you do, so.
Ms. Cavalier, I think a round of applause for the para-professionals is appropriate, so. Thank you for pointing that out and recognizing that. Board members, anything else before I turn it over to Superintendent Sesker? Okay, Mr. Sesker?
Yeah, sure, I was seeing if John, if you wrote those notes down about the state high school league. I know that the girls shot clock is gonna start in, girls and boys basketball, shot clock 23-24, so that's something to look forward to. Also, girls wrestling is adopted, section and state wrestling tournament starting next year, so that's exciting.
Wow.
There are a couple other ones, but I don't remember off right offhand what those were. Okay, MSBA conference was great. Thanks, Cassie and Courtney, for coming up, that was fun. We had a good time and learned a lot. I had a chance to go to a middle school boys' basketball game, and boy, does that coach do well over there. He's just an outstanding coach. So I got to watch Chad and his team play, and, and I could see the 7th grade too, so that was fun to see the kids play.
Was that in spite of the coach, did you say that?
Yeah, exactly. I went to the conference dance meet last Saturday. They had two really great routines. Unfortunately, we had a couple falls, which always hurts the scores. We still ended up getting third in the conference, which is terrific. Just a tribute to the coaches and those athletes, they just do a wonderful job there. So congratulations to them, and they'll now go to sections and, and hopefully the state tournament coming up too. Went to a children's theater production last week. Paul Johnson, as you know, does just a tremendous job with those kids. He actually wrote the play. Tammy actually did the choreography for the kids. And it was fun to see it. It was for the preschoolers came up, Olivia's team came up with their kids, and then also FLS Elementary came and watched the production. It was really very fun, and just an outstanding job by those 9th through 12th graders. Let's see, Rotary's been busy. As you know, I'm the Rotary president this year, and we have a Cambodia trip that we're planning. I'm not intending on going, but we have raised enough money to provide clean water for a school over there, a small school. And Sam Oak was involved in this, and so Dick Houston's really involved in this. But I have to give a big shout-out to Natalie Ginter, who helped write the grant and really did a great job of pushing this forward. We got over the hump, and we have been approved, we've got the money rolling. And so there'll be a group of people from Faribault community that will be going over to Cambodia to assist in that water project, so pretty exciting stuff.
Superintendent Sesker, can you mention the amount of money that was raised and how quickly it was raised?
Yeah, so we started the project, looking at the project last spring, and starting July was really our fundraising push. And it's a matching grant, so we had to match about $35,000. And we ended up raising close to $38,000 of revenues in less than six months for this Cambodia trip. So just terrific job. As you know, Dick Houston does a really good job with some of those pieces in there. With the Chamber, been involved with the Housing Development Committee, which has been a really interesting for me. I don't know what good I am on that committee other than listening and hearing what, what's going on in the community with new housing and new developments in there. It's, it's good for me to be on that committee because obviously, new houses bring kids. Kids bring revenue to the district, and it's a good community part of. Also part of the Vision Task Force, we haven't had a meeting for a while, but that's also part of the Chamber, and we continue that great relationship with, with the Chamber. Finally, I was able to get to the hoedown right before Christmas up at Roosevelt. I don't know if anybody else did.
I was there.
Did you get up there, Courtney? And it's always fun to see that. John and Gillian do just a great job up there with those kids, and it's a, a great event right before the Christmas break. And that's all I have.
Mr. Rocha?
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have brought this up, but Mr. Richard Hanson, who was a long-term board member in the 80s and 90s, and not too many people in the room would remember, Dick. John, you certainly would, and I did, passed away suddenly last week from a medical condition. He lived in Faribault for many years, served on the board for at least, you know, 10 or 12 years. And moved to Waconia and suddenly passed away, so. Condolences to the Hanson family.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Rocha. Mr. Sesker, can you just briefly give us an update on the addition at Roosevelt?
Oh.
How that's progressing?
Yeah, so hopefully you got the email about taking a tour. It is getting pretty close to completion. We have a couple steps to get our occupancy permit. We plan on using it for Roosevelt students and testing and some other things this year. And then the plan is to move some of those early childhood programs into those buildings, but it looks great. I was just in there today, and I can't say enough good things about Metcon and, and the contractors. They've just done a tremendous job up there. Of course, Kane has been involved directing it along with ISG, so it's been good.
Will there be any community open house, or, I mean, do you do a ribbon-cutting or anything? Or I don't know how that works.
I'm sure that'll be in the plans as we get closer to the occupancy. I, I don't know what that timeline is for getting actually in there physically. It'll probably be the first of March, but yeah, that'd be part of the plan, yep.
Wonderful, great. Board members, anything else? Superintendent Sesker, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, brings us to 14, dates to remember. February 1st, 2022 is the policy meeting. February 7th, 2022 is the work session. February 14th, 2022 is the finance meeting. That's Valentine's, for all those people who want to have Valentine's breakfast. All right, well, anyway. February 22nd, 2022, Tuesday is our board meeting. That's Tuesday due to?
President's Day.
That's good.
President's Day.
All right. With that, I will entertain a move to adjourn this meeting. And I will just make note, is everybody okay if we take a 15-minute recess until our next meeting, which is a continuance of our meeting on Friday? Is everybody okay with that? So looking at my clock.
25 after.
Yeah, 25 after, we're gonna round up a little bit, so thank you. 7:25 is when we will start our next meeting. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rocha, a second by Ms. Cavalier. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. No, no, I was the aye.
That's a no, or are you out of? No, anyway, I believe it passes six to zero. Thank you, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
You're good? Okay, welcome back to all of you, excuse me, that have joined us for our regular meeting at 5:30 here Monday night. Drew, do you know if Ted is on yet?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. We will now call our January 24th special board meeting. We'll take that back. Yeah, we'll call it as to order. Ms. Steve, will you please determine if we have a form present?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do.
Okay. Mr. Blasing, how are you, sir? Can you hear us all right? We can't hear you. Give us one second. I'm not sure if you're muted or if we don't have sound on. Oh. Let me turn it off.
Our timing is perfect. I just finished another meeting and Drew sent me the link, so this is working like clockwork tonight for Faribault. You look a lot different here with your camera rather than sitting at the chair right in front of you.
Well, I'm not sure, but I know this is one jealous board member. At least I was sitting where you were. I can't speak for the others.
I didn't make any subjective judgments about how you look. I just said you look different, that's all.
I was going to ask if Drew was a real fan.
Yeah. Well, thank you, thank you for joining us. And you can hear us okay?
Yes, yes, I can hear you okay.
Might help if I turn the microphone back towards me a little bit. But okay, wonderful. And we can hear you pretty well as well, so thank you. So since we've already done the pledge of allegiance and this is a continuance of our previous meeting, I guess I'll just entertain a approval of the agenda, which is item number four.
Sumud. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, I'm sorry, a motion by Mr. Olson, a second by Mr. Robichaud. Any further discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, this brings us to number five, item number five, which is the continuation of the special board meeting from January 21st, 2022, which was last Friday. And it brings us to where we're here tonight. And our objective here is once again to discuss information from the interviews and do our very, very best to settle on, settle is the wrong word, to choose the approved preferred candidate for the superintendent position. So Ted, do you have any remarks for us that you want to share before we open it up to the board members for, you know, comments and discussion and anything like that?
I don't want to stand in your way of continued dialogue. However, I will share with you, I had delightful conversations with both candidates after your meeting last Friday afternoon. And they're both really fine gentlemen and honestly accomplished school leaders as well. So it was refreshing to converse with them. They both have remained in the search. That was my concern, part of the reason I called them. And so I just share that with you, that it was refreshing to speak with the two of them. I asked and they were all counting and they said, Ted, I was working, but I had others who were watching and letting me know as things were moving along. So as I said, I was relieved to speak with both of them on Friday and to honor that they both continue to be grand listed in leading the Faribault schools as the next superintendent of schools. And so with that, I think I'll stop and be listening intently to your discussion here this evening.
Okay, thank you for that. Board members, before we open it up, I'd just like to address the board and members of the community. And anything said here tonight, I hope is not any kind of personal attack on anyone. I hope we recognize, as Mr. Blasing said, that these two individuals are great leaders and great people. And I would also just like to thank the community for having a vested interest in this in terms of, I don't know how many people watched on Friday. I joke with some people that we're going to start selling popcorn or something. But I certainly know there's been a few that have watched and maybe more than a few. And so I also know that us as board members received certainly some phone calls from people and we certainly received some emails from people and maybe even had some dialogue with people at a weekend event or a tournament or wherever, the grocery store or church or whatever. So I just really want to thank the community for, you know, having a vested interest in sharing their thoughts and concerns. I think it's very apparent, in the previous meeting, there's a whole lot of 6 to 0 votes on things that are dealing with, you know, standard procedure contracts every year or whatever. And I just do, I want to thank this board. Yes, last Friday was 3 to 3, but I do think this board does their due diligence and their homework and has every reason that they believe what they believe. So with that, I want to thank everybody and once again, thank the community, thank the staff for, you know, being here with us and whatnot. So with that, I'll open it up to just some discussion and I hope we can have some discussion and have everybody's voices heard if they want to speak on either or candidate or both before we have any type of motion. So I think that would be fair. So any board member want to start the dialogue or conversation with any feedback or thoughts or anything?
Mr. Chair, I certainly will. Thank you. Board members and members of the public, I'm sure all six of us here spent three days at least receiving emails, calls, et cetera here. And as a result of many of those emails and calls, I did quite a bit of research, quite a bit of reflecting and things. And I found myself in those calls answering a lot of questions about the process from start, from the start. So I would like to take at this time- So I would like to take, at this time, take some time to review with the board and the public, the process of hiring the next superintendent of Faribault Public Schools. Beginning the process, the board hired HYA, Hazard Young &amp; T Associates, to guide and lead us in the superintendent's search. HYA has supplied us with a leadership profile report with an executive summary of the findings of the leadership profile assessment. Administrators, community members, parents of students, support staff, teachers, and board members participated in either an interview or an online survey. Four hundred and eighty-four individuals participated and provided input. The data in the leadership profile report lists the strengths of the district, challenges and issues facing the district, and desired characteristics of potential candidates for the position of superintendent of Faribault Public Schools. HYA then posted and promoted the position and also recruited and encouraged candidates to apply. After time and screening the applications, HYA then presented six candidates to the board for personal interviews. Upon conclusion of the first round of interviews, HYA provided the Delphi technique to be used as a process and ground rules to work our way from six candidates to three candidates, from three candidates to two candidates, and from the two remaining to determine a preferred candidate. Through this process, consensus was reached from the board for the first two steps, but not the last. Consensus does not constitute any unanimous vote, a five to one vote or a four to two vote. Consensus is a general agreement or opinion held by all or most. The process has gone off track due to the concerns of some board members. The data from the Delphi technique and discussion shows consensus from the board for Mr. Anderson as the preferred candidate. Eight to six in the first round, three hundred and five to two hundred and ninety-five in the second round. Why has the progress, process and ground rules changed? I could put the process in a real conundrum tonight by stating that I will not work with a candidate for whatever reasons and/or rationale that I have. I will not do that as I know that it is not in agreement with the oath of office I took as a board member. It is morally wrong, unethical, unprofessional, and could give someone false and inaccurate information or opinion of a candidate. I also know myself making that statement, that I would be expected to recuse myself from the search, be asked to resign, and possibly be recalled from the board. During this process, I'm sure every board member has received several messages and has reached out to many as well to assist in making this selection. The question I have been asked over and over is, does this survey matter? Is there a consistent process and ground rules to be transparent to the public? This, in my opinion, is how trust and accountability are earned. I look forward to the rest of the board members' discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Billingham. Other board members? Mr. Robishaw.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Billingham, for your comments, and I know that we all received, as Mr. Billingham indicated, a number of emails addressing both candidates and not making any judgments. And I appreciate the individuals who came forth tonight to speak on behalf of one candidate. The question I have is if we were to hold this meeting in Red Wing, would we have the same kind of comments made about Mr. Anderson? I did follow up with one individual whom I know very well, that I would not question this person's impressions or take on any individual. This individual has worked in, not currently, but has consulted in Red Wing many times, and this individual was a former superintendent of schools, fully understanding the dynamics of being a superintendent. And I asked this person about Mr. Anderson, and I think in all fairness to what was presented tonight, I think we need to hear some positive about Mr. Anderson as well. And this individual wrote back and said, I would be most happy to visit with you about Mr. Anderson. So I'm just gonna read some of the comments that she made. I'd be happy to connect with you by phone on this if you wish to talk later, but let me just tell you, Carson Anderson is one of the most amazing human beings I've ever I would hire him in a second. He is outstanding. I started working with him several years ago, and he's been one of the most impressive superintendents I've come across, and this person has been involved in statewide issues. Not only is he a fine superintendent, he's an incredibly kind person. He has taken risks and focused on things that relate to race and gender. I think he's willing to break barriers, and he talked about not accepting the status quo. If you want to talk more about him, I could certainly call you later. He has a board that's challenging his work on equity, but I highlight the issue that this individual, whom I have the greatest respect for, would hire Mr. Anderson instantly, no questions asked, and in fact, he is one of the kindest individuals, not only an excellent leader, but also a very kind human being. So I think that needs to be entered into the record as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Robishaw. Any other thoughts or comments, board members? I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity and chance to follow up and ask any other questions of any other board members.
I spoke to or received emails from thirty-five people this weekend, many of whom I called cold. I talked to current parents, past parents, current employees, past employees, and community members, and people who represented different communities in our city. It's very clear that Mr. Bente has lots of support and lots of supporters in our city, but it's also very clear that there are many people in Faribault who work in the district or have their children in the district, or who used to work in the district, or who currently work in the district, or who are members of the community, who saw what Dr. Robishaw just described in Mr. Anderson's candidacy. I think it's really important that everyone recognize, moving forward, that we have two candidates who people see a lot of positive qualities in and a lot of potential in. I hope that we can continue to have this conversation in a respectful manner, and I hope that the fact that we could not come to consensus on Friday does not reflect poorly on us. Taking the continuance over the weekend was incredibly important to me. I was not willing to make a decision on Friday, and I think it's very important that we took the time to listen to people in our community over the weekend. So I hope that the people of Minnesota and other educators around the state see that our decision to take a continuance on Friday was an act of good faith, to make sure we came to our best decision, not an act of inability of ours to work together. I have, I have to say out loud that I heard from several people who were disappointed that there were no female candidates in our final pool and that there was only one female candidate in our pool of six. I feel a need to say that out loud again. And I also have heard from many people who were concerned about some of the comments made about Mr. Anderson in our meeting on Friday, and in fact, our comments made about other candidates in the previous meeting, and I need to say that out loud because I think it's really important that we move forward in a respectful, in a respectful way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cavalier. Ms. Stevens?
Oh, excuse me. I just want to say that I'm very grateful to all the time that the thirty-five people that I spoke to or received emails from took the time to reach out. I think that's incredibly important, and I want to say that in my conversations or emails with those thirty-five people, it was the most respectful exchange I've had with the community in two years around a complicated and difficult issue, and I'm incredibly proud of our community for handling this this way after what we've heard of about the divisiveness in communities over the last two years over other issues. So I'm very grateful to the people of Faribault and the people who work in the Faribault Public Schools for that this weekend. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, thank you, Ms. Cavalier. Ms. Stevens or Mr. Olson?
Yeah, like everyone else, I spoke with a lot of people, and I really do appreciate all varying opinions. I think that that's how I'm gonna make my decision. You know, I guess my biggest question, and this is rhetorical, it just comes back to how we gain experience, and I don't, we use the, we threw around the word status quo so many times last week, and I guess my other question is, are we furthering the mindset of status quo? Should we, if Mr. Bente doesn't have that title of superintendent previously, at the end of the day, I will work with either of them. I think they're great people. I just further ask what kind of message that we're sending.
Mr. Olson, any thoughts or comments you'd like to make?
Again, I had a lot of calls Friday afternoon and all day Saturday, where I really didn't get anything done except talk to people. And the calls I got preferred one candidate, they're the ones that told me, of course, and again, it's all gonna get down to a vote, one way or another. It's my right to vote the way I want, as long as they respect my vote, and I respect everybody's vote. Everybody's got one vote. Then we have to decide, I believe. I don't know what's gonna happen if we don't decide tonight. I don't know what the next step is, so.
In a bit of a humorous moment, I did receive a text that had a suggestion, and we could do like the NFL, flip a coin, and the first team that kicks a field goal wins. So that was that individual's recommendation if we can't come to terms tonight, so. Anything else, Mr. Olson, you'd like to share?
No.
You know, I said my thanks and gratitude to the community and everybody that's reached out. I do want to address the thought that the Delphi technique was the way that we were choosing our superintendent. I thought it was one tool, and Mr. Blasing, I don't know, maybe I interpreted incorrectly. I think it's one very important tool that we used to try to help filter and, you know, move people on. But I guess, I think Ms. Cavalier had asked at one point about it on the first round, when we were trying to go from six to three, and we had a very clear frontrunner, if you will, in Mr. Joe Brown, and I can't remember if he scored twenty-six out of thirty or twenty-eight out of thirty. We did it twice, and I believe those were the two numbers. I don't remember which came first and which came second. And I think, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but I think, Ms. Cavalier, you had, you know, expressed a little bit of concern about, hey, is this really our only tool that we're using to move on? And so I certainly thought it was a tool, an important tool, but I didn't know, I was not under the impression that would be necessarily the be-all, end-all. I know we had a whole lot of talk and conversations and deliberation in trying to find consensus of going from six to three, and I think we maybe did choose the highest three at that time, but there was a whole lot of talk about not necessarily choosing those highest three, and I was not under the impression that we had to. And so I think it's a very valid tool. I fully hear what Mr. Billingham is saying, in the second round of the three oh five, two ninety-five, and I think I had stated in there that I initially even had a sixty instead of a fifty-five, but I put fifty-five, forty-five. I too am supportive of both these individuals. I've mentioned before that Mr. Bente is slightly higher on my list for a few reasons of him being here for nine years and, I believe, having a pretty solid record with our community and understanding the complexity of our community with diverse groups. And yet I also recognize, and I think it's very real, the experience that he doesn't have in that seat. As I mentioned on Friday, I do believe he has the highest risk and yet the highest reward. I believe he comes with probably the most energy, but that's not fair to say that Mr. Anderson doesn't come with a whole lot either. And so I greatly respect both. I thought both had great interviews. They were my top two, and at some point tonight, we're gonna try to choose a top one. And so I couldn't be happier that they are the last two that made it here. I thought they were the two best for us, based on all of our conversations and trying to come to a consensus. So I think that's all I have to say now. I'd ask if there's any follow-up questions, board members of anybody, any comments, you know, any concerns or anything like that. Yes, Mr. Olson?
Yeah, with that, was it the Delphi rating system? Like the first round, Mr. Brown went from twenty-six to twenty-eight, which was far above anybody. And I know it's a concern of the board, then this letter was emailed to us, which I think he addressed, but it's, we don't know where it came from. We don't know if it was local or was down in Fairmont. We don't know. Too bad, that could not be traced, to find out exactly who's doing that, which I think that basically destroyed Joe Brown. Went from high to low in a couple weeks, and that's very concerning to me, that a person can be, their character can be assassinated. One time, the board rated him pretty high, and we took a second vote and went higher, almost perfect out of thirty. He had a twenty-eight. And then two weeks later, I think two weeks later, went the lowest because of the letter. I don't think it was fair to him or fair to us, and I think, I can only, I can only speak for myself, but I ignored it because it was, there was no name and phone number, and I think it destroyed a person. That's so sad. That's so sad. Why wasn't there other letters on, to other candidates? You know, I don't want those letters, but to have a letter that's, we don't know where it came from, to be assassinated.
Mr. Olson, and I don't mean to interrupt you, and I appreciate what you're saying. I want to try to, if we can, bring this back to the two candidates we have left.
Right, but that's how we got to the two candidates of the last Friday.
That letter you referenced may or may not have played a part in some minds and certainly some not. I, once again, for me, it was, I guess I really don't know, need to go into the reasons, but I think we all have our own individual reasons, and certainly the community and staff session have their own reasons as well, you know, of their feedback. So, Mr. Robishaw?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just a couple of comments. Number one, as far as the Delphi process goes, kind of put us in a choice situation. Nonetheless, I look at it as a democratic process where we all cast our vote, whether that you want to call it Delphi or what other kind of a tool. And when that vote was cast by all five, six of us, there was one preferred candidate by all six of us, just by the numerical scoring. And I also want to make it very clear that I have also wanna make it very clear that I have absolutely nothing against Mr. Bente. I think he's a fine human being. I think he's done a wonderful job at the Faribault High School. He's changed the culture at that high school, and my interaction with him has been nothing but positive, even though I don't have children in the Faribault High School, but as a board member, and I respect what he's done in this district. So, as like everybody else, that I assume would work with either one of the candidates, I wanna assure this board that I will do everything, if Mr. Bente happens to be the choice, and that is a consensus of the board, then I will do everything to make sure that Mr. Bente is successful. Because if he's not successful, we're not successful, our school is not successful, and consequently, unfortunately, our children are not. So I wanna make that very clear.
Mr. Robichaud, I wanna follow up on that. If either candidate, whoever's chosen, isn't successful, we're not successful, right? So I just wanna expand on that. It doesn't, it's not just Mr. Bente, it's not just Mr. Anderson. Either one that we choose, we owe it to them to come in with open ears, open arms, all the above, open mind, and do our very, very best that we can do with the chosen individual, assuming they accept the position.
Well, Steve.
Mr. Bellingham?
You can tell by my look, can't you? Yeah. I'm sure the remainder of the board members, including myself here in the public, is, at this point, we've expressed all our rhetoric. We've hashed over it for multiple hours. It's time to get down to business. And so with that, Mr. Chair, I would propose a motion so we know where people stand and we can work off that piece there. So if you would permit me, I would like to make a motion. Yes?
Sure.
Okay. I, I move that approval of Carson Anderson is a preferred candidate for the Faribault Public School's superintendency.
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bellingham. We have a second for Mr. Robichaud for the approval of Mr. Carson Anderson as the preferred candidate for superintendent position. With that said, I will open it up for any further discussion before we do a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, board members, I speak in favor of the motion. Again, as I stated on Thursday and Friday, I'm going by basic principles I've established with this process. One is experience, two is vision, and third is living in the community. Experience, the data speaks for itself. 24 years, and then compared to a portfolio going to MDE for licensure approval. Vision, both gentlemen have a vision. Some of the vision has already been laid out as far as our strategic plan and our pathways, et cetera, with the levy vote. So we can take that. Living in the community, I went line by line through the 27 pages of community comment. Between that and the calls and emails I received, 47 people strongly, strongly stated that the next superintendent should live within the community. Those are my basic principles. I believe it's a solid decision based on those basic principles. And that ends my discussion for, in favor of the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Robichaud.
To talk to the motion, if I may. I agree with Mr. Bellingham's three basic principles. Plus, I would like to add one. And Mr. Anderson kept talking about he will not accept the status quo. The status quo is not good enough. It is, it's been okay, but it's not good enough anymore. If we are taking a look at educating children in the next foreseeable years, we cannot and we must not accept the status quo. And I heard him say that over and over again. One other thing that I heard Mr. Anderson say over and over again is, and it's verified by the reference check that I made, is that he is not an "I" person, he is a "we" person. Talking about the solar panels, you know, he said, "That was not my idea. I just said, 'Go ahead and work it out.'" And he gave credit to where credit was due. Not saying that Mr. Bente will not do the same thing, but I heard that loud and clear from Mr. Anderson. So to speak to the motion.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'd like to make one final comment also before we vote. Since Mr. Olson shared the, about his phone calls, I wasn't going to share, but it may not come to be much surprise, but the majority of my phone calls that I took this weekend and emails that I took this weekend were in favor of Mr. Anderson's candidacy. I'd also like to just say out loud publicly that I am sad and sorry that Mr. Anderson's comments about Equity and his Equity journey and the professional development he's undertaken around Equity, which are consistent and in many cases exactly the same as they are in Faribault and what many districts around Minnesota are doing in response to the important work that Equity is, which is one of our strategies. I am sad and sorry that those comments were misconstrued and misrepresented as an indication that he would teach CRT in our district. Those comments are false. There's nothing to validate that. And I'm sad and sorry that his candidacy was impacted in the community by that false narrative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cavalier. Any further discussion? Ms. Steves, Mr. Olson?
I guess I have somewhat of a, I don't know, concern. You know, we're not legally able to ask either candidate to move here. So I guess my question is, is why should we base our decision? I would love more than anything, I base my career on making this place a great place to live, but I can't base this decision, unfortunately, on the fact that he's said that he would move here or won't move here. So I unfortunately will not be supporting Mr. Anderson.
Okay. Mr. Olson, any comments? You don't have to make them if you don't wanna. I'm just giving everybody the opportunity.
I guess that sometimes when I speak, certain board members object to it. I personally don't care. I represent a good conservative base in here and talk to many people. And I just, the beliefs of Mr. Anderson and myself do not match. And I, I will not apologize now or ever. I will stand by my decision to the day I die.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion by Mr. Bellingham that names Mr. Carson Anderson as the preferred candidate for the superintendent position. We have a second by Mr. Robichaud. We've had discussion. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Steves, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham?
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jerry Robichaud?
Aye.
Cassie Steves?
No.
Chad Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes four to two.
Four to two, thank you. We- Okay, so, we are back, and I would entertain a motion to reconvene our meeting after that recess. Is there a motion to reconvene our meeting?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, a second by Mr. Bellingham. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. We are now back in our meeting. With that said, Mr. Bellingham, would you like to make a remark or a comment or ask a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and board members who allowed for that time for reflection. To continue the discussion, to move this along, I refer back to, and I've thought long and hard about this for a long time. And when I taught, there was always a chapter and section on the common good. What is the common good? The common good is what decisions are made and what programs we are that serves the best outcome for the most citizens and people possible. You can get in all sorts of analyzations and things on the common good. But referring to this case, I believe the common good is the unity of the district, the unity of the community, to be able to process this decision and move forward. What I see and hear with the board deadlocked, it's disappointing that, and I can now rationalize how Congress and the legislature, when people are unwilling to discuss properly and compromise. With that being said, for the good of the community, for the good of the district, for the good of the city, I will now support the candidacy of Jamie Bente. So, Mr. Chair, with that, I'll turn it over to somebody else as I do not wish to make the motion for support at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Bellingham.
I'll make the motion that Mr. Bente is the candidate for superintendent of the Faribault School System.
We have a motion for Mr. Bente to be the preferred candidate for the superintendent position. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Olson, a second by Ms. Steves. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I will. So with this, again, my rationale is for good of the community and the district. And I sincerely hope that people who called me and said, "I expect you to vote for Mr. Bente", now reach my plea and I expect you to vote for programs and levies within the district to support our schools. Because that's what we're telling you now, is we have a candidate who believe that the board will move forward with. Otherwise, you're double talking. Again, the common good. And I hope it rings through and that everybody now pulls together and works what's best for number one, our students. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bellingham. For other further discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Mr. Olson, a second by Ms. Steves. Ms. Steves, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham?
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud?
I have said over and over, I'm sorry. Can I speak to the motion, Mr. Chair?
Again, at this point during the roll call?
Okay.
Is it, Mr. Bellingham?
Probably not.
Okay. Aye.
Cassie Steves? Aye. Chad Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. I want to, first of all, thank the board members. Mr. Bellingham, I want to thank you specifically for your comments and the common good, the greater good, the students. I want to thank Mr. Robichaud and Ms. Cavalier for also supporting. And without the three of you moving to support Mr. Bente, I'm not sure if we would have been here another half an hour, hour, or if we would have continued. So I want to greatly thank you. I also, once again, want to thank the community for reaching out and everybody who reached out to express their interest. As Mr. Bellingham mentioned, we sure hope that this community supports our students in our public schools. As you saw, this was a difficult process, a stressful process for a lot of people. And at the end of the day, it was about the students that moved it forward. Mr. Blazing, would you have any comments or discussion that you'd like to share with us and next steps or anything like that? I'm sorry? He can't hear us?
Yes, I have four things. Number one, we have to find out if your preferred candidate is accepting your offer. Second thing, the second thing is, if, if so, then I will send him a link to start the investigative background check. And as I've noted, that normally will take at least seven working days to be returned. And then, third thing would be contract negotiations. You can go ahead and begin those contingent, contingent upon a successful investigative background check and, in Mr. Bente's place, appropriate licensure to serve as superintendent.
Mr. Blazing, the appropriate licensure, was that number four or was that part of number three?
Yeah, yes, that was number four, right.
Okay, thank you. So with that said, Mr. Blazing, who reaches out to Mr. Bente? And that'll happen tonight, I would assume? And so, okay? And is, is that somebody from the board here or is that yourself?
I'm sorry, Ted, we're breaking up on that, I didn't hear.
Sorry, maybe I'm too close to the mic. Is, is, is that somebody from the board that reaches out to Mr. Bente? Or is that yourself that does? Is that me as the board chair? That's me? Okay.
As board chair, I think it's appropriate that you call him and tell, invite him to become the next superintendent of schools contingent upon things that I noted before.
Okay. Is, is there anything else, Ted, other than those four items that you would like to speak to tonight yet? I'm sorry, could you hear me?
I'm getting a lot of feedback. No, I did not, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I apologize. What should I do? Oh, would all board members, they are, okay. Thank you, Mr. Bellingham. Can you hear me any better now? Sorry, now we can't hear you. Are you there?
All right, let's try this.
Okay. Can you hear, can you hear me okay right now?
Yes, I can hear you, Ted, oh yeah.
Thank you, thank you, board members for doing that. Is there anything else other than these four items? Anything in closing you'd like to share with us or mention to us or guide us towards?
No. Obviously, I'll call Carson Anderson and inform him of your decision. I would encourage you as a board to send a letter to the other five candidates that you met with expressing your appreciation and thanks for their interest in leading the Fairbault Public Schools. You were fortunate, you had a slate of six really good candidates. And that's not the case we're seeing as we move along here this season, you know, trying to attract candidates to serve as superintendents of schools. So it was a difficult decision, I realize that. But you were fortunate in that you had six very viable candidates who came forward. And there, as noted, there were others in the candidate pool, some that pulled out at the last second. So I, we felt very comfortable with the six that you met with.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Board members, any comments? I know, Mr. Robichaud, I don't know if you want to mention anything you were, you were maybe going to, no, you're good, okay. Other board members, any thoughts or comments as we come to a close here tonight and, and move on here with our preferred candidate? Obviously with the assumption of the four items that Mr. Blazing mentioned to us. Board members, any comments or thoughts in closing?
Mr. Chair, if I may. So for clarification, with negotiations as far as salary and benefits, who and is that done by Ms. Yocum or the negotiations committee? What normally happens there, Ms. Yocum or Mr. Chair?
Mr. Robichaud, I'm going to ask you.
I would recommend that it not be Nicole. Not that she couldn't do a job, but she shouldn't be negotiating her boss's salary, so.
Which she's done, but. At this case, probably so, yes.
Does that then defer to the negotiations committee? Would that seem to make sense or is, there's three of us?
I would say that, I think that's a great suggestion. That would be probably your call, Mr. Chair.
I, I would prefer that. We're involved in all the other negotiations. I don't know why this would be any different. So I would agree that that's the way it should go.
Okay.
I think that would be good.
Okay, any, any issues with that, board members? No, okay. And then.
How about Ms. Yocum, does she have any issues with that?
Ms. Yocum, do you have any issues with that?
No, I can be a resource.
So I think we would use her as a resource, right? But we would do our best to put all the parameters around to ask her any questions and, and go from there, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, maybe lastly here, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the comments. Here of the three of us board members seeing the big picture and common good, I do think it speaks volumes that we were not willing or we see the big picture to sit here all night or continue a deadlock, which wouldn't serve anyone good and this community no good in, in this decision. And I'm, I got something else to say, but I won't say it because it's very unprofessional. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. So, thank you.
I would like to, first of all, thank Mr. Anderson for sharing with us through this process. I know it's been weird and ugly. I would like to publicly thank you, Mr. Bellingham, for your beautiful comments.
Leadership, it's called leadership.
Any other comments in, in closing? Mr. Robichaud?
It says, well, it does have to do with the fact that we now have a search for a high school principal, which I would encourage that to begin as soon as possible. Beginning, you know, when it's all said and done, it would be March or April. And we're at a point where, just like superintendents, there's not a large pool out there for high school principals either.
Well said.
It was more of a comment than anything else, Mr. Chair.
Yep, well said. Mr. Olson, Ms. Cavalier, any comments in closing here?
No, thank you, everyone.
Mr. Olson? All right, once again, I really sincerely thank all of you and the board. Tremendous amount of time and effort. Mr. Blazing, I want to thank you. I think you brought us a, my opinion, you brought us six very high-quality candidates. I can tell you, thank you for our Wednesday meetings and helping lay this out. I'd like to thank Mr. Robichaud, Ms. Yocum, for all their efforts on that committee. I'd like to thank Ms. Yocum and Ms. Zaveral for all the help and organization of round one, round two, staff, community, all of that stuff. You know, we take it for granted until you walk in the shoes of the people that did it and they've spent a tremendous amount of time doing it. So, once again, thank you, everybody. With that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Olson, a second by Ms. Cavalier. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero, thank you, everyone.